I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which has been established, one nation, under God, indivisible, with one common justice, for all.
All right. Uh, this is the regular meeting of the Britton Borough Council, Tuesday, March eighth, twenty twenty-two, at seven thirty P M. Uh, we had a meeting, an executive session earlier to discuss, uh, could, um, land purchase, uh, questions?
And legal matters.
And legal matters. So, uh, called order, Amanda, you wanna do the roll?
Uh, Jennifer Salsberg, here.
Robin Hellman, here.
Peter Lamonti, here.
John Wolf, here.
Lori Castaneda, here.
Maureen Frasco, here.
Steve Asher, here.
James Donson, here.
All right. Uh, that done, a consideration of consent agenda items, the February eighth, twenty twenty-two minutes, and the bills list for February of twenty twenty-two. I have a motion to, um, do this.
I make a motion to do that?
Oh, is this where I tell you that I saw something?
Yeah, just say I'm amended by whatever you're telling me in your email.
Yeah.
Okay, I got it, I'll fix that.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, item three is resident remarks, this is the time for more residents to bring forth any, uh, questions they have that are not on the agenda items. Marie?
Um, I heard some very disturbing news recently. Um, the, the, uh, property, the historic property at the, okay, it's four seventy-one, West Butler Avenue, right on the corner of Shady Retreat and Butler Avenue. Uh, it was sold last month, and I heard that it may be torn down. Amanda, do you know, do you know anything about that?
Um, I know that it was sold, and I know one of the, they are considering taking it down. We don't have official land development plans or anything to confirm exactly what they're doing. Um, but we've, I've had preliminary conversations that they have purchased the property to develop it. I just don't know for sure what they're doing yet, because there's no plans in.
Okay, um, because it is, uh, in the historic overlay zone, and there's a certain amount of hoops that have to be jumped through to demolish a property, and it's just a wonderful, wonderful building, and, um, I live in a hundred and fifty-year-old house here in the borough on West Butler Avenue. By the way, my name is Marie Coy, I'm sure those who don't know. And, um, I really would like to know what's happening with that, so if we could be kept abreast. Who is the, uh, who is the, uh, council liaison to the Historic Preservation Committee?
I don't think we have one.
Have you, have you appointed council liaisons to all the committees yet this year?
We have, but that one was skipped.
Okay.
It probably shouldn't be made, because my wife is on the committee, but, uh...
And then they meet during the day, which makes it a challenge for some of us.
Yeah, it's a long day, a lot of money to spend.
Yes, we have a council. Hi, sweetie. Pardon?
They need ten o'clock on a, I think it's the second one, so hold on.
I was just saying it's a challenge, you know, some of us, uh, have day jobs, some of us have to cover it.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just curious, but I'd like to, if we kept abreast, uh, should I keep contacting Amanda, or how can I?
Well, so that, because it's gonna be a big land development, it's gonna have to go through multiple stages too, so like, it'll be at the Landy Commission, uh, first, before it even comes here as well.
Okay.
How many acres is that?
Thank you.
Um...
Finally?
What was that, even second?
Question was how many acres, yeah.
I'm looking, I'm looking.
It is one point eight eight.
Oh, acres, okay.
Right. Um, so getting...
Is that a quiet sale?
Oh, no.
Yeah, it was, I mean, I knew about it, because he called, the developer called, as a heads up, just to talk what our processes are. Uh, but it wa, other than that, it was a quiet sale, I wouldn't have known how he not called, because nothing's come in yet. Um, so sometimes we get wind that they call the chat ahead of time, and other times I get a plan set on my desk one day, as a surprise.
Yeah, I just don't remember seeing it for sales.
Yeah, I don't think it was ever, I think it was just a quiet sale. He's been working on it for a couple of months, but there's no plans yet or anything yet, as far as they're permanently into.
That's what I was going to ask you, is there any ideas what they're planning on doing with it?
Uh, something that falls under the mixed-use overlay. Whatever they can do under the overlay.
And take the building down?
Most, it's possible. I don't know for sure, I'm not gonna, I don't wanna say that they're definitely taking it down, because I don't know what they're doing. I know that that's one of the conversations that they've had based on my discussions with them. But again, I don't wanna say that they're doing it and then have, and then not do it, but I don't know until the plan set comes in.
But we do have an anti-demolition ordinance that, um, was passed, I think in two thousand and seven.
Okay. I'll take a look at it and see how it for the, that property, reach out to them, it's...
Could you, could you send us all the copy of the ordinance?
Yeah, they'll bring us.
So we have some idea what we're working with. Any other resident remarks? Hearing none? Um, review of written staff reports and elected official reports, starting with a manager's report?
Do have my written report. Um, a lot of the, so the letter for the trash billing went out in the beginning of February, um, just after your meeting. We got a lot of calls, more about the price, dramatic price jump than, um, the actual fact that it was on the tax bill. Uh, but, so again, as I emailed you, the talking points, you're, unfortunately, we're in a post-COVID contract. The market, as I've acknowledged many times, the market changed for recycling, for trash. Um, we're seeing that, I just got an email from White Tail that basically said, we're just gonna charge you whatever we feel like based on our own fuel costs for a while, and good luck, um, that you can cancel all their lifetime contracts and they're not honoring lifetime pricing anymore. So you're seeing that change too, for the, those individual trash contracts are all jumping as well. Um, so it's reflected across the board, at least you guys have the contract where you're secure and they can't change your price based on gas prices or anything like that. But that is part of why your rates have jumped post-COVID, the forty dollars or so quarters, because markets changed, recycling, gas is more expensive, layers more expensive, just everything's more, generally more expensive. So that's why your post, your pre-COVID was at sixty-six a quarter, your post is not a hundred and five. Um, and I know that was pretty alarming for a lot of people, but after we did take a lot of the calls, hopefully, we created the website as well on the, on the front page of our website, so that everybody can see the meetings that it was discussed at, and listen to the videos and everything too, because there were some questions about the transparency of the trash. Um, so we created that, so that everybody could see that it was, we discussed it at three meetings. Um, there was three opportunities for residents to, um, and discuss it, so, because we wanted to squash that, well, we weren't tran, we weren't transparent.
Yeah, that's, that was the thing that I heard, and I tried to squash it.
But, yeah, so we did that webpage in hopes of trying to show the residents that, no, you, you guys did not do this behind closed doors, it was a very transparent policy. And there were some questions about why didn't we negotiate better. Uh, we explained that again, as a municipality, we're not allowed to negotiate, albeit on what we get back from business where we're at. We can't go back and say, oh, we want our word of chief opinion, we do this, this, and price-wise.
I know I got one email from a resident who was pretty upset, mostly because of the cost increase, I'm sure, but the fact of having to pay it upfront was a big issue to her.
We had a few of those, but a lot of it really was just, why is it so much higher? And as soon as we took those calls and walked them through the changes in the market, they were fine, there was no complaints of that.
And I know, I know that Polichuk's office got calls specifically, where I think ultimately probably referred back to me. And I think David got a couple.
Yes.
Yeah, we had a couple, there's a couple of commercial properties that have on my tax bills that shouldn't, so we already worked all that out, Nicole, so any, like, missed billings worked out, all of, everybody's fine, handle all that too. Hopefully. The calls seem to have cut down, because the tax bills did go out already. Uh, Nicole has a copy of the letter as well, um, hopefully...
I hope we can force the commercial buildings or the commercial properties to use... Because like, our next-door neighbors, supposedly, have a business running out of, and were grandfathered, and so White Tail comes down Iron Hill Road, and they pick up twice a week, and I'm just wondering why they're allowed to do that.
Twice a week at the end of the driveway, or twice a week in the dumpster?
At the end of the driveway.
That's something we need to look into.
Well, you're saying it's a business though, right?
There, it's a grandfathered business.
A grandfathered business. But I'm, I'm not sure what that means.
Well, they're...
Like, it's in a house, it's in a house?
Yeah, it's residential.
Got it, got it.
It's an antique shop.
Oh, it's a mannequin.
It used to be a furniture refinisher, and then it's now it's an E and P.
Is it, do you know if someone lived there as well, or it's just, oh, yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna look into that, that's, that should be...
Yeah, and they get picked up twice a week.
Now, we do it, we have a, we've created a homeowners association where we have a dumpster, and it's a once-a-week pickup, so we're not running trash trucks twice a week down the roads, which is the whole purpose behind this whole thing, is to limit the amount of trash trucks. But to somebody like that, I think that's a residential situation that should be looked into. Homeowners associations, I get it, they're different.
Lauren, off, off the record, can you get an address?
And, you know, we've had a, a few requests, uh, if there could be senior discounts for the trash, and what's your perspective on that, Amanda?
Well, not, not now.
Not now.
Yeah, not now, the contract...
It had to be built in.
Yeah, it would have had to be built in.
And then ultimately, your other residents would, would pay more in order to, you know, somebody had to make up the, the zone somewhere, unfortunately.
Yeah, but I mean, if that's something that you wanna, uh, under the next contract, have a discussion, that's something that we can definitely consider and build into. There are other municipalities that do offer the senior discount as well.
Um, and some, some of them, the municipality subsidizing it too, versus the borrower, so...
All right, uh, are there any written staff reports or elected official reports? We are against...
Yeah, just very quickly, um, an update on the resolution that we passed last month to have a quorum, that quorum rule changed from, you need X amount of people physically at the meeting to get rid of that needed at the meeting. We passed it last month. I then took it to a member of the Bus County Boroughs Association, who's also a member of the, let's see, Alphabetsilpeer, Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs. We're ahead of the deadline, it had to be into that second... It had to go from Amanda and me to the second person by March twenty-something.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, that's gonna be sent very soon. After that, it's out of our hands for a while. It goes to another committee, which has all these resolutions, not just add all the resolutions, and decides which ones they will back and which ones they won't. Then after that, it goes to other meetings. Now, I said to my contact at P S A B, I can't imagine that we, the Britton Borough, were the only people in the entire state of Pennsylvania to come up with this idea, and we're not. As it turns out, there's already resolution that has been submitted, but he did say by the fact that you, meaning the Britton Borough Council, the fact that we also passed a resolution adds more cranes and more weight to the whole thing. So, I'll keep you all posted in that. To me, my editorial comment seems like a no-brainer that should be approved, but I don't know. But I'll keep you all posted on that. Um, I do thank Amanda for, um, she will be sending the approved resolution plus a letter under Britton Borough, letter had just, so it's official that it wasn't just this Steve Asher sending something, it was officially adopted, so I'll keep you all posted on that.
You're good. Any other official report, elected official reports? Uh, hearing and none, uh, Chief, you're up.
All right, thank you, good evening, everyone, good to see everyone again. Um, just wanted to report, uh, at council, you have this activity sheet in your packet, but for those who do not, uh, we responded to two hundred and seventy-one calls for service last month, Monday, February, here in New Britton Borough, and what I like is, uh, there's a lot of zeros on this page, and we work very, very hard to keep them that way. So, crime-wise, we're in good shape, uh, it's a great, safe community, as we all know, and like I said, we work very hard to keep those numbers at zero. Uh, what I'd like to report to council is that, uh, next week, March fourteenth and fifteenth, we're gonna finish up, uh, our statewide accreditation that we've been working on to, for, probably going on five years. Our policies are, um, meet the requirements from, uh, P A Chiefs of Police Association. Our policies have been in place for quite some time, our problem was the building, uh, as, as you all know. So, uh, it took a little while to get the, uh, building going. We are now working on the last couple punch list items, and that now has brought us up to accreditation standards, uh, and we will be finishing that process again next week. We had to meet, um, a hundred and thirty-nine policies, and within those policies, we had to prove to the chiefs of police, uh, with six hundred proofs. Uh, not only do we have to have the policies in place, but we have to physically show that we're doing what we say we're doing, and that was over six hundred. So we passed our mock accreditation last week, or, I'm sorry, two weeks ago, and again, now we're ready to finish it up and, uh, drive it home. So, uh, really a great thing for the community, um, to tell everyone that you've talked to your constituents, that, uh, Central Bucks Regional Police Department is a statewide accredited, uh, police department. Any questions, or anyone? Sure.
I get, uh, an email from you folks, and, um, I saw today, or it was yesterday, that there are, there was a picture that was in the email of two men, maybe young men, who were, um, you were curious as to who they were, they were found on Francis Myers Road.
Correct.
And I don't know what they did, I, I, I didn't get what they, what they were accused of.
Is that the, uh, crime watch?
Yes.
Right, it's, um, have to be careful in a public meeting, uh, because it's all protected by right to know, but, uh, we are looking at them for, um, theft from the area.
Okay.
Is this, that's why I can't, that's why I can't put that out there.
Thank you.
Uh, because everyone is, uh, innocent until proven guilty, so... But I'm glad you subscribe to that, because we do put a lot of stuff out there.
It is, it's, it's a great...
Uh, that's really our work sign anymore, and...
Thank you.
Sure.
So what does accreditation mean?
Accreditation means that we have opened up our doors, and we are a transparent police department, and we invited, uh, assessors in from all over Pennsylvania to come in and look at our books, and see and show them how we operate, that everything is standard of the industry, that we don't apply chokeholds, and that we don't do all those things that you've read in papers last, uh, or in the media the last two years. Um, we're ahead of the curve on so many initiatives, that a lot of departments are just catching up on. You hear the word de-escalation, we've been doing that for four years at Central Bucks. You hear about body-borne cameras, we are now so far into the program, in this year's budget, we are going to our second generation of body-borne cameras, ours are six years old. So it's those kind of things that we want to stay ahead of the curve, and, um, it's, it's difficult in today's day and age with budgets and technology, when you identify something and you budget for it, by the time you get it, it's sometimes already obsolete. So accreditation keeps us in that flow, uh, to keep everything current, uh, and, um, it's just recognized throughout Pennsylvania as, you know, that, that's the way we want to go.
It's a true honor, yeah, you have that.
Chief, how many police departments are there in Pennsylvania?
There's over...
And how many are accredited?
Uh, there are over twelve hundred police departments in Pennsylvania, the vast majority of them being five, uh, five officers or less. If, uh, when you start to go through the rural areas, which really, between Philadelphia and Pittsburgh, uh, Pennsylvania still is a fairly rural state. Uh, I would say out of the twelve hundred, less than two hundred are accredited. It is quite a bit of work, uh, as I just explained, and it's a lengthy process, but so, so, uh, well worth it. So, what happens is, once we're accredited, uh, the work doesn't stop. Uh, we continue to gather proofs, and then in three years, we come around for re-accreditation. So it's a process now that will never end. It's constantly proving to assessors that we're doing what we say we do.
How often do you get accredited, Chief? How often does that come out?
Every three years.
Really?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, you're welcome.
Chief, does that improve the Central Bucks Regional Police in grant acquisition?
Yes, it improves our opportunity to secure grants, which is a good thing for everyone. It also reduces our, uh, insurance premiums, uh, being a accredited police department, and it also helps us, uh, those few times that we find ourselves in civil litigation, that the, uh, attorneys on both sides know that we are accredited and we are following the rules that we're supposed to. Congratulations.
Um, next item is the committee activity review questions and announcements, and I wondered, is there anyone from Birdtown?
Oh.
Committee here, because they have a, do have something to announce then.
Oh, we do? We have something to announce? We have, um...
What, what is, what is David's habitat?
Oh, oh, the habitat, yes. Um, so, we are officially, um, uh, certified, I guess, as a wildlife habitat in New Britton, um, Borough, and we, there's some signage and some ceremony that will go with that, um, to come. And we've also, um, set our date for the pop-up park, which we will have a celebration, uh, at that time as well. Um, that'll be the third weekend in September, I think, I wanna say sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. Um, and, um, and there actually is some news on the Birdtown program itself. Um, the Birdtown program ha, and Tom's going to present about this at the next meeting, um, but the Birdtown, um, program has undergone some changes. Um, doesn't really affect New Britton all that much, but he'll explain how it affects the whole state and what we're going to be doing moving forward.
We, we applied for that, um, we were having a big question of the farmer's market, when do we hear about that?
You just heard.
Yeah, that was it. No, but I thought that that was for our, our own personal, um, property to be considered.
Yeah, if you apply for it, you should have gotten this...
Mine came.
Yeah, we...
Yeah, we got one as well.
And I'm pretty sure you're on the list, so, um, we can check that you're on the list. Okay. Um...
And with regard to that announcement, I just, uh, happened to have it, uh, as well in my notes, and just to kind of, uh, add on to what Lori announced, the, um, the wildlife habitat certification for the Borough. Um, the quote about it is that the Borough is recognized for exceptional action to preserve, enhance, restore, and connect wildlife habitat, while also communicating the importance of habitat stewardship to the public. These efforts made under the auspices of the National Wildlife Federation's Garden for Wildlife Program contribute to establishing a network of thriving communities where people, wildlife, and plants all flourish. And it's taken us two years and about seventy private residences in the Borough being certified as wildlife habitat. Um, there are several, uh, committee members, um, notably Dave Horn and Jane McRody, who were instrumental in, um, champion, championing so many of us to have our residences certified. And there are only five other, uh, N, N W F certified communities in the state of Pennsylvania, and only one other in southeastern Pennsylvania, so it's, it's quite, quite an accomplishment.
Yeah. And I think we still at the Borough Office have, for anybody who wants to sign up to register their property, there's still literature in the office.
I'd, I'd like to point out that, well, a, a cynic would say, so, uh, this is really important for the Borough, particularly when applying for grants, that the various, um, certifications and habitat and Birdtown and Tree City are all things that get checked off on a grant application and, and make it any application stronger than it might otherwise be. All right, uh, any other...
Yeah, I'd like to just give a quick update on public safety. We've got three clips from the C B C committee is here, and I'll hand it over to them who can ask council a couple of things. Public safety, thanks to Chief Knott, he came to our last meeting to discuss three traffic studies that were done, uh, last year, as a statistician, I looked at them with a, you know, critical eye towards it. Two of the three did not reveal, in my opinion, any quote-unquote significant traffic issues, whereas one, possibly, there might have been a more incidence of speeding than you would expect. All of that aside, there were some residents who lived on Aaron's and Matthews at the meeting, said regardless of what the numbers say, we have anecdotal information about cars zooming around curves and going too fast, et cetera, et cetera. So what the chief suggested, and I think it was, was it just Aaron's or Aaron's and Matthews for the, for the digital signs?
Uh, right now, it's all Matthews.
Okay. You know, the chief very kindly said, let's put up some digital, digital speed signs to see what happens. And we'll be sent a report about that, we'll look it over, we'll share it with, um, we'll share it with public safety. If that doesn't quote-unquote resolve the issue, the next step would be having some new signage put up in that, in that area, and we would be discussing just what kinds of signs. We're not there yet, we would like to see the results, and those residents that live in that area, thought having a digital sign, we've all seen those, would be a good first step, so we'll be doing that. I'll report back when we have some concrete recommendations. In addition, the study of Borough lighting continues, I don't have anything new to report now, but we're working with one of our residents, Bob Klingel, on this, and, um, perhaps at next month's council meeting, I'll have more to, um, tell people about where we are with that. In the interest of time, if anybody has any further questions on that, they can see me after this meeting, but in the interest of time, uh, we have Maureen Lowe, who is the chair of the C B C, which is the Community and Business Committee. We have Fiona Nolan, who's also on that committee, and David Hololinski on that committee. We had a really good meeting last time, and there were some issues that they would like to bring up to council, so...
Hi, everybody. Um, well, I'm pretty new to, um, local politics and to the C B C and, uh, in general, but I'm happy to be on this committee, and, um, yeah, starting, I took Lauren's spot when she, uh, got that seat right there, so congratulations to you. But, um, having said that, I, you know, I'm new, I'm, I'm, I'm learning a lot every time I meet, and, um, I wanna, I do wanna learn more, and as, as the C B C committee, in my view, is really very broad in that we want to improve community business, I mean, it's simply, it's a big task. Um, and I wondered, and we discussed this at our meeting, if there is any, um, if there is any regular policy, if there's any, uh, anything that happens amongst the committees, so that the left hand is talking to the right, um, so we can all kind of know what each other is kind of thinking about, you know, as in that community and business, if... Sorry.
You timed it up, sorry.
Yeah, if, you know, if, if, uh, zoning wants, you know, such-and-such to happen, and community business doesn't know about it, you know, maybe we could have done something to help, or if, uh, we have an interest in, you know, improving some area, and zoning doesn't know about it, or planning doesn't know about it, it seems like it would be in the best interest for all of us to kind of get together and find that out. So I didn't know if there is a forum for subcommittees, or if it's, that's something that already happens, I don't know, I just wanted to put it out there and maybe start this.
So the short question is, is there a separate, are subcommittees, or small groupings of a greater committee, subject to the consent?
Well, they, they may be, but you could easily advertise that type of forum if it's something more interesting.
Well, I wonder if, if the council in general has a, a consideration in doing that and bringing the committees together.
Yeah, that's a question for you guys.
I know that when I was, um, heading the C B C, uh, back in the day when, um, Samantha was around, uh, she used to kind of fill us in all the time on, uh, development projects, and, uh, she would meet with me and Dave and somebody else, but she used to kind of let us know what was going on, um, with, with... But she used to kind of let us know what was going on with the borough, so that, you know, back then, we were looking at the signage, and we were looking at wayfinding signs, and the building sign, and, you know, so there's the Shade Tree Committee, there's also the Parks and Rec. And we were always trying to, like, we were like walking a fine line. Is this a Park and Rec thing, or is this a Shade Tree Committee thing? Or, you know, should we be weighing in on this, or what are they doing? So I see, I see what you're talking about now. I don't know if the, there's a way that maybe even just the, you know, the committee chairs could, maybe once a quarter, or just keep each other abreast as to what's going on.
Well, just, just to hone in on that a bit, you have a lineage here of past chairs. I was chair of CBC before Lauren. More importantly than that is that some of our major goals were on quote-unquote the beautification of the borough, like the signs and the green box, we did a lot of that. This year, after conversations with David, David had suggested, you know, wouldn't it be great if this committee also emphasized on how do we attract new businesses? So at our last meeting, Frank Lombardo attended, who most of you know as a real estate individual in the area.
I was gonna say, we were gonna go there.
And attract businesses, so I don't want to steal your.
No, that's. No, but yeah, Frank's Samantha, that was us last month.
Last year, to the credit of the committee, we, they instituted the first annual Car Show/Scat Grove Festival, which was by all accounts a success, and that will be a regular thing. We had no funding for it, yet we had a lot of people who were sponsors, just like the farmers market turned out to be successful. So, anyway, Ma, I'll give it back to.
Well, I think, you know, you started it off, you know, that we did have Frank there, and, you know, it was very interesting talking to him. He had, you know, a lot of good ideas and just a lot of good comments, you know, among them being, and I know, but it's tight. But, you know, if we want to attract business, how do you attract business? Sometimes you gotta, you know, spend money to make money, and maybe some, some sort of advertising campaign, small or large, you know, might help the borough in general, bring that in, and just getting the word out.
Well, we used to have a guy who did that, that, that was interested.
But Frank was very helpful of pointing out what type of businesses he's trying to bring into the borough. Okay, but like we were just talking about that house that was just sold, okay? Wouldn't, if planning doesn't know about it yet, and yet we would like to be able to help out to figure out what kind of business would be good for there. And that's why Samantha's like, what is it zoned for? Okay, then there's the other property, and is it Iron Hill, that's up for sale. You know, it's like, what can we bring into the borough, and should we be part of that along with planning, so that we all are on the same page? And also getting businesses, you know, to interact with each other, to help each other, I think is, is also not a new idea, but something I'd bring up.
Well, I always thought that that was more of what CBC was about, was having businesses or, you know, businesses in the community getting together and seeing how we could enhance life for New Britain Borough. I don't know if the committee has the ability to attract businesses. I mean, when we had Steve Barth here, I mean, that was his job, and he did it, you know, I'm assuming he did it really well.
And he also let us know what was going on in other burrows and other townships, it's like, okay, what have they done?
Exactly. I just don't think that volunteer organization can be doing.
I totally agree with you, and that it's part of why, you know, the, our thought of, you know, if we all talk together, you know, maybe we can help each other.
Yeah.
I don't know how much, but.
Yeah, but I do think that you need to know what's going on with the committees. I mean, because I felt that way last year when we were planning the car show. You know, I was like, well, should this be Parks and Rec's thing to do and not the CBC?
Well, same with the farmer's market.
Yeah.
You know, we weren't part of it all, that's Parks and Rec, but that's business that's being generated from dollars to the church, so. We can go on and on about that type of stuff, but it's just, oh, I think we just need better communication within the committees.
Couldn't we have something like a chat room or a chat board, or does that totally violate?
Sunshine.
If it's open to the pub, open to the public, or let's say that committee members could post on it for perhaps not the general public.
The only problem that I've been finding, because I've been going knocking on doors to businesses to try to get some new business, and a lot of them are like, well, what do you actually do, and how can I be part of it, and what will I be, what do I gain from it? Okay, so it's kind of difficult, sometimes it's like, well, what's going on at this building? And it's like, we don't know, you know, like, what's going on in this piece of land? Well, I don't know.
We do. We might be a little bit behind, but at the moment, they're all up.
I, I was the first chair of the CBC and one of the four women who started the committee. And a couple, one of the things we started doing was with the newsletter, we would highlight a new, a business, every newsletter. We also would welcome new businesses into the borough.
But we don't have a newsletter anymore that's on paper.
I know.
So, and so I don't know if anybody's even reading it.
But there's, because there's something we could do like that, number one. Number two, when you talk about attracting businesses to the borough, when the Knoll property was sold, when we pretty much first started the CBC, and we were hoping that we could attract what we wanted there, but that doesn't work, as Lauren said, that doesn't work, you're not going to attract, it's going to be whatever the economic situation is. So that's one thing that was really difficult.
Yeah. I do think that something the committee can do, while we may not be able to, to choose or directly attract the businesses in, I think that something the committee can do is information gather and find out from business owners within New Britain, like, what keeps them here, what they're, like, what is supportive for them, how they feel welcome in the community, and what makes them want to stay in New Britain. And I think the more that we look into that and keep that in consideration, the more we're informed in decisions that we make that can then help to attract new businesses to the area.
When I was the chair, we sent out a survey to all the businesses, and exactly what you're saying, asking a lot of those kind of questions. Why are you, you know, why, why are you here, what do you like about it, what don't you like about it? If you want, if you want the, those results on behalf of it.
On the other side of that, back in 2017, we had a town hall, and there was a survey, and we were the question, if you could have any business in the borough, what would you want? And finishing either one, two, or two, one, is a bakery slash coffee shop or an ice cream place.
Or deli.
I can rest her right there, she was lunching, not extreme, my dad, who's 95 years old.
But again, the point was that we really, the citizens don't really get to decide who comes in, that's a purely business decision.
Why can't we get a Starbucks, why can't we get a.
But you go back to what Jen's talking about, what would draw a Starbucks in here?
Thank you, exactly.
Okay, that's really what she's trying to say.
Exactly.
You're gonna talk to businesses, find out what would make them come here.
Right, that's right.
Okay, then we focus on that, because that would dictate.
That's right.
Zoning is fixed, that's, that's a separate board of its own, okay, that is a fixed process.
That makes sense, yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
But planning, if you find out what businesses want, then you go to planning. Planning is more flexible, that they can come up with ideas and stuff like that. Zoning can always be entertained down the road to redo our zoning to attract that, which is what we've done with these overlays. These overlays are supposed to help that kind of thing.
Well, Frank made that very clear, you need to give businesses a reason, why should they come?
Right.
Yeah.
So if you find that kind of stuff out, we work off of that, then that really would help speed up these processes. Because that stuff, then Amanda, you know, Amanda's gonna be the front row. When a builder looks at a lot and says that I want, you know, David's lot, he's going to Amanda before he even talks to David to figure out what he can do with it. So that's where, and that's how she knows under the cover that something's happening, but it doesn't mean it's going to happen. You know, because David may come back and say, I went $20 million for my property. Builder's gonna go, I can't make money off of that, and I'm out of here. But that's where, that's how she finds out about it. So you come up with these ideas or these, these needs that would attract businesses, then that's the stuff that we all should focus in on and start developing it.
So that's something you'd like to see?
Oh, most definitely, which is what Jen's talking about, Jen, Jen's absolutely right.
I was really impressed with the idea of contacting our businesses, because what we put in the newsletter is focused really at the residents, but we don't have anything that we focus at the businesses and interact with them and solicit from them, what can we do to support their business?
Are you looking at more of a retail or commercial industry, like what's going on behind, you know, all the offices that are behind the shopping center? Or are you looking mostly at Main Street, you know, or Butler Avenue to bring commercial, retail?
Every, every business that has property or location in the borough has some sort of interest in the borough to one extent or another. And I would like to see them more involved in the borough. We have Sweet Stevens, for example, a law firm up here, I believe specializes in school law or whatever. Absolutely no contact whatsoever with the borough, we have no idea who they are. And I wondered if we couldn't get them more interested in, for example, the sidewalk going up past their property, potentially improves the property, their employees will presumably like to go for a walk at noon hours and what have you, but.
So is that something we could do as a mailing to them? Couldn't we have some money to do that then?
We could probably, yeah.
I mean, really, because that's what's gonna happen, is, you know, if we have to do a mailing to these businesses, we're gonna have to have the funding to have it printed and for postage.
Yeah.
But let's look at this, what's gonna keep organons here?
Good question, if they could get Delaware Valley students to be able to swipe their cards, that would help.
Exactly, but that's, that's the kind of stuff that we need to know. Okay, because the businesses, you go down to Champ Engineering, he's not going anywhere, he's there.
He's there, he's been there forever.
He's been there forever, and his business doesn't, he doesn't rely on, you know, Butler Avenue. He doesn't rely on, you know, us going there and buying something, okay? What I'm looking at is organons and companies like that, that are businesses like that, that are gonna bring that, that, you know, that university overlay to life, because that's what's gonna bring our borough to life.
Well, I don't mean to go on about this, but yes, the university, there should be more stuff going on up that side of town. But wasn't there a talk, or something about a small brewery or something where the kids could watch?
There's been a bunch of talks, but nobody's doing anything.
Nobody's doing anything.
Right.
How do we attract that?
Well, how do we keep Delaware Valley from buying up all the houses?
I think the other thing about attracting businesses to the community is keeping the businesses that are existing already in the community here, because if, if other businesses see businesses leaving New Britain, then it's, it's not really worth it. So I think, like, if we're trying to draw in businesses, then as all of us as residents also need to make sure that we're supporting our local business.
Have we lost many businesses in the borough?
Have we lost many businesses?
Yeah.
I can tell you, there's probably been every business overturned in the shopping center.
In the shopping center.
At least once.
I, I was one of, I, I was part of one of those businesses that was like the shopping center years ago.
No, it was.
Did your business close down, or did you move?
No, we relocated.
You moved out of the borough?
Clemens closed, the giant one, and it still rotated the whole business. You were the only one, Clemens seemed to want to own that whole thing.
Yeah, Clemens owned it all, yeah, many years ago.
I have another thing I will say about surveying businesses is that, especially for business owners that are busy, if you send them something in the mail, they are probably not.
Yeah, that, that was my explanation, it's only email, but even an email that looks like spam.
It may, it may require mobilizing some volunteers to actually go in and try to speak with somebody in person, you know, and that way they feel also that we're, we're going out of our way to talk to them and hear more than what they might fill out on a survey.
Is there a, go ahead.
Does our website currently give statistical information that would interest businesses? For example, what the median income is, what the age is, all of those statistical items that should be on our website. So if a business is looking, it's there. They don't have to call Amanda, or they don't have to call Peter.
Isn't that on the county?
It's all there to look at.
But that's also probably easily gotten from the census.
Yeah, and I mean, part of the books.
I don't get calls to that stuff. Because they don't get calls to that type of thing, because that's all done by the realtors.
Yeah.
Exactly, but if it's on our website.
There is a link for our demographics on the website.
Okay.
And it's all in the comprehensive plan, which when we put together the comprehensive plan, that was one of the things that, that was done for, was to attract businesses to our, to our community. So all that's in there.
Is there an obvious method of businesses getting information out to the community, like Facebook? Or something that we could say, here, if you want to tell the town something, put it here, send it to this. I know we have, we have a Facebook page, but it's not very well used, you know?
No, and you can't post to it. Like, when I was on the CBC, I could.
No, yeah, we, you can't, you can't have the town hall posted.
No.
What about even just the.
Well, is there, is there a way to do that?
No, 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 there's a way practically, but legally, you do not, we, the borough cannot do that. Anything the borough is issuing on a Facebook page is a borough message, so it has to only be a limited group of people controlled by Amanda.
You know, I'm looking at our borough website right now, there's not even a place to sign up for the newsletter. For, you mean, for like the electronic one? Yeah. So, the plan is to send it out as part of our, like, the Ready Bucks. So those that are already registered through Ready Bucks, we get, we send it out that way, and maybe posted on the website. So I'm saying, look at this right here. Registered or is it an email?
Yes.
Oh, registers, okay, registers. Yeah, so that's right, yeah. But it's not just like.
It's not, it's not blatant in front of your face, no.
I'd just like to throw it out that if you're looking for a person, representation of the borough who's concerned, to reach out to some of the local businesses, to talk to them. I don't know how much throwing the, you know, the mayor's name behind, something like that would happen, but I'd be more than happy to talk to you about.
Great, thank you.
Something.
Maybe come to one of our meetings or just meet with us.
Have you guys on my calendar.
All right, I'd like to move on again to business items.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for what you had.
I'd like to thank the CBC for coming out tonight, you did a great job in explaining what this committee would like to do. So thank you to Fiona, Maureen, David, thank you.
Mike and I were just chatting unofficially for a second, but one idea, idea that came up is through the Chalfont New Britain Business Alliance, that maybe a connection there could be useful as well.
And they don't have the same restrictions.
And they wouldn't have that same restrictions.
I didn't know that there was such a thing.
Yeah.
Makes it come out more than 8 o'clock.
Because one of the things that I mentioned to Frank last month was that it's like, how come Chalfont gets all the business? They have four Mexican restaurants.
Yeah.
We need to work hard.
You know, it's like, what's the deal, you know?
Yeah, I know.
That's a good point.
But that could be a good connection, and if they were to do a Facebook page, they wouldn't have the restrictions that a municipal entity has.
So what is it, the Chalfont?
Chalfont New Britain Business Alliance.
They meet tomorrow morning, 8 o'clock, over at Chalfont, to the Borough Hall.
The borough, the borough is a member.
Yeah, the borough is a member.
So I can go tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock, 8 o'clock?
I'm gonna try to meet up, if you wanna meet up with me, we can talk with some of them about.
Business alliance.
Fiona, I'm gonna send you the email you have from that.
Next time.
There you go.
Hey, consideration of that, an ordinance, 419, Public Works Director. Amanda, do you want to address that, or?
Well, Amanda can, Amanda can hit it, unless you want me to take it, Amanda, so it doesn't really matter. Yeah, sure, so we talked about this at your last meeting, got some great feedback and made the change that you requested, which separates out Orchard Park and the nature preserve for purposes of the work to be done by the Public Works Director. Otherwise, it is the same ordinance that you reviewed last time, as we discussed that, it's very, very, it's relatively vitals, so there's nothing surprising, we're talking streets, storm sewers, and maintenance of borough property. it's relatively vanilla, so there's nothing surprising. We're talking streets, storm sewers, and maintenance of borough property. Um, as I said, Orchard Park and the nature preserve are pulled out, and those properties are to be maintained subject to existing maintenance programs, um which was the request, and otherwise, there have been no changes. So if you adopt this this evening, it would create a public works department in the borough, which we've been talking about for a very long time. Um, including the creation of the position of Director of Public Works.
Right, does anyone have any questions or comments on the ordinance or the Public Works Director?
That's been discussed before and advertised, so with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second, uh all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It's done, then Public Works Director should be right over there.
Well, you do have to appoint him.
You have to.
Uh, you do have to appoint him.
So you have, um, so uh Brian Coleman in Coleman Landscaping, he's previously appointed as your Roadmaster. So he's been handling like the general tasks, however, you had on different contracts, snow plowing and um landscaping maintenance. So Brian would then take over both of those, assuming you appoint Brian, sorry. Assuming you appoint Brian, Coleman Landscaping, he would absorb those two contracts as well, which would be the traditional Public Works Department model. Um, when I was drafting the budget originally, um everything's drafted with this position in mind. Um, as far as budget allocation and different line items, uh not anticipating any skyrocketing prices on anything, Brian and I talked about it extensively. Um, we're pretty much in line with where we were. Uh, we're just looking to streamline, create your Public Works Department, um have more of that in-house feeling that other municipalities have. Um, and then since Brian's already been with us for, what, a year or two now, the natural transition was my my recommendation and proposal. And you have in your pocket, um, all the equipment and Brian's background as well, he's very well qualified, he's been tremendous help. In the eight months that I, eight or nine months that I've been here, working as high public works people and over my career, Brian would be hired anywhere at all, no problem, no questions asked. Um, so I'm very comfortable with this model, I'm very comfortable, Brian would work on an hourly basis, it'd still be contracted through him. It's not a full-time employee, there's no benefits or anything like that. So we would be paying him um an hourly rate, and that would be what we would do. Mike and I will draft a formalized contract that will outline everything and all the rates and stuff. And that way, we have that formally in on paper, so everybody knows where we're at. Because I know Park and Rock likes to keep an eye on their budgets and things like that, so that would give you a a way at that point to budget. Everything will generally be about where we're at right over the last couple of years and previous moments.
Do you have any issues with the monies, the contracts, bidding, not bidding?
No, those, no, what we did was then, though, all the old contracts, this timed out perfectly, have all expired. So the snow plowing and landscaping contracts are expired now, so.
And 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 in terms of the actual bidding process, because you're 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 hiring Brian and giving him significant discretion versus just a normal contractor, which means you 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 have the ability and the right, and you should have the ability and the right, to actually choose who it's going to be. So that's why it's separated out from normal public bidding. That's a great, that was a great question.
So on on like the snow plowing and the grass mowing, we've had um bidding previously. So I understand, you know, short term, as we're starting out, we've got the rates about equal. But how will we assure, like for the borough finances moving forward, that basically the borough's still getting the good deal, you know?
So it'd be similar, like, if we're working with Brian, it'll be similar of like how we do with our professional consultants, Stili felt. If we hit a point where Brian's rates need to be adjusted, he would submit to us, just like if Mike needs to adjust his rates, or Karen needs to adjust her rates. And that would be a discussion that you would have at that point if we need to change rates.
And and if, and if.
And then if you aren't comfortable with those rates, then you have the opportunity that we can basically put out a employment offer, job description, and say, hey, we're hired, we're looking for people.
And 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 what and what Amanda does is, with all of the professionals, she monitors where we're at in terms of what she expected for the year. And there are times that, you know, maybe we'll forego a complicated legal matter for the rest of the year, because we just don't have it in the budget. So it would be, it would be something very similar to that. The bare bone stuff, the mowing, obviously, you have to do, but.
I just do want to clarify that I think I'm speaking for the nature preserve committee, but I think the nature preserve committee, Parks and Bird Town are excited about this opportunity, that it, this will be a huge help to them. Uh, and they're looking forward to to meeting and having discussions about how.
Who has our contract this year for Schmidt?
Schmidt heating.
That's what I thought it was. So now Brian's company would take that over?
Yes, so as a public works department, they'll take over all of our, all of the traditional municipal public works jobs.
Uh, Brian, you have a truck that's big enough?
Brian has it all, he's been on call all year, just in case we needed that.
Yeah, just, we were having issues with Schmidt being in the area.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, I know the guy who did it before Schmidt, his truck was way too small.
No, Brian's got much better equipment than.
Well, Brian's got lots of different things in trucks.
Yeah, and there was a list of equipment submitted with your basic package, but.
Well, I see, but it just says snow room.
Yeah, now, Brian, he's been, we, Brian, John, and I have been sitting essentially flaming out, and worst case scenario, we have issues with the current snowplow contractor. Brian's basically had in his back pocket to go and ready to be.
And he will do the soul thing and all.
Everything, yep, all of it.
Communications between committees and Brian should go through you.
Everything will go through me. So think of it as like a department head, and he reports to me, so you would go, the committees would go to the manager, and then I would work with them. And that's obviously like ongoing issues will work out as a similar, the committees can kind of reach out directly. But ultimately, I need to know what's going on, so when I get a bill, I know what Brian, I know that what Brian did was actually legitimate.
I know, I know as far as Orchard Park was coming, I had a meeting just last night, and wanted to have a conversation so that we could outline things that they would like you to do, not like you to do, when you can do them.
Right, so that would get submitted to me first, and then you can have, all proof of that conversation, and then work it out with them.
If there's no further discussion, can I have a motion to appoint Brian our Public Works Director?
So moved.
Second.
Second, uh all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Now, you can really score.
I have for years. But just a shirt.
The uh next item on business is to consider Resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh nine, which is a no-match grant from D C E D for Butler Avenue sidewalk project phase three.
So you have in your revised pockets, you have the numbers. Basically, the, you just need to approve the resolution tonight so that I can finish the grant. Um, it's a no-match grant, um what we need money-wise is gonna be over what the a million dollar cap is. But we do have, Karen did include in that one point seven million dollars total, the bridge work and everything that we have, four hundred eighty thousand dollars towards already. There will be some portions of the sidewalks, it'll probably be done as properties are developed closer up to Evergreen. But those, I had Karen, worst case scenario, run it all the way from floor Funeral Home up to Evergreen. So that way, we could ask for the maximum amount amount of money, we know exactly what we're gonna do with this. Um, so that's what you have in front of you. Um, the grants do march key, this is, the resolution is one of the last pieces now, and I've been working on it this week, so it should be. It's pretty similar content-wise to the last two versions of it, so it's been pretty quick to just take what Samantha had written in the past and copy and paste the new one. So, um, so, but it's a very rare grant that we, that's up to a million dollars with no match, so.
Yeah.
And how would it be dispersed, over how many years or whatever?
Um, it's probably a three-year again, and then with a two-year possible. Uh, extension, or apparently if you get really lucky, sometimes it gives you more time. Uh, because like the grant.
That's that's never really happened again.
It's never happened. So we did, so the current sidewalk, we said, when you awarded the bid last, uh month, or the portion up to um the Funeral Home area, we said that it had to be done by June thirtieth. Ironically, I guess, because we finally did something, um when I was, D C E D called to follow up with it. And while he told me when I first started, we couldn't have any more extensions, and we had to be done by June thirtieth twenty twenty-two. He calls and goes, well, hold on, let me see what I can do, and now has extended it out into February, probably because we finally did something with it. So.
Yeah, that's a good deal.
It was, because six months previously, he was like, you can't do it, you're done, like, this is it. Um, so we were able to secure another extra six months on it. But the intent, the contractor understands that while we do have more time, you still need to get done it, and they think we're not gonna wait till February to get extensions. But it gave us a little more leeway at least. Not, so I don't know if that's ever gonna happen again, I don't know why he did it this time.
Should we have any negatives or penalties if we don't meet the timing or don't raise our funds or what?
We just don't get the money. So it's basically whatever work, whatever was done up until the day the grant expires, we can reimburse for, but anything after that, we don't get.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, it's certainly no brain, do we have a motion to uh pass the Resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh nine?
Yeah, I'll make that that motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now that's done, my wife refers to these as a uniform grant, because they're things we've heard of that never actually seen. All right, authorization to advertise ordinance four twenty, New Britain Borough Stormwater Management Comprehensive Ordinance Update.
So and also, I will just talk about it as one, ordinance four twenty-one, as well as the subdivision and development update. So um I had Karen give me talking points for you. Basically, it's a very technical update of our, all of our stormwater ordinances based on updated model D E P ordinances. Um, we have to fix that, we have to update the ordinance based on D E P requirements, based on your stormwater management permits. Generally speaking, you basically have no choice at this point, um, because it's D E P.
An almeis valve.
And everybody has to do it, you have to do this, it's D E P rules. Um, so Gilmore Associates went through our existing ordinances, um and as you'll see, in the red line version, I was not using them, Karen basically put, like, delete on and started all over. Um, so she went through and made sure that everything was in compliance with the new model ordinances. Of course, both the subdivision ordinance and, because there is requirements in your SADA ordinance for stormwater. So she fixed those to match what's in the rest of it, what's in your actual stormwater ordinance. It's very technical, of an or, both updates are very, very engineering technical, um. But I trust, I've done this with Karen the best, I know she knows exactly what she's doing. So I'm fully comfortable with her supporting all the amendments that she made. And I would, Karen and I both recommend that you authorize the advertisements of both ordinance four twenty and four twenty-one this evening so that we can get this done in time as part of our MS four case. Karen will be here next month, as well, she can answer any more technical questions related to the ordinance that you have. But she'll also be giving our MS four required annual education, so she'll be here in April to get those done. Goes out on a journey, we deny.
Your time for you just has to be approved.
By September thirtieth. Uh, but we're doing it right now, because you have, um, it's kind of a light month. She already had all the work done, there's no point in waiting until the last possible, I mean, we might as well do it now, especially with a lot of new developments splitting in the background. We should have had everything updated to have there, all the new developments remaining, the new standards as well.
This is basically piece of boilerplate that, if you read it, you could say, oh my god, I don't understand.
If you read it, you understand.
Karen was calling me at our reading sections to be asked, and I was literally, I'm like, whatever you say, I don't understand.
You retain the borough engineer for a reason, and she's, she's doing two other ones in my almeis valve, and she's done a great job, so.
Right, um, any further discussion? Hearing none, may I have a motion to um authorization or advertise for the two ordinances? Any, any opposed?
Second.
Second, I might have heard a second one. Wait, uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say? Last, we're down to resident remarks, which we probably, we're here, that might be.
I have a question in reference to the signage at the east end of the borough. Within the last few years, we had a quote-unquote offer.
I reached out to Jeff to.
Have you heard anything? It it's a matter of, at one point, uh Gilmore and Associates offered to pay for a borough welcome sign similar to the one at the west end of the borough uh for us, and.
I'll follow up with Jeff, because when I talked to Jeff, he said he wanted to talk, try to see if he, it's, because I guess Steve was coming up sometime, it was by Stephen.
Yeah, Steve is the one who made that offer.
But I will follow up with Jeff.
Yeah, Steve's in Florida, isn't he?
Yeah.
Yeah, he went to, he was there.
Yeah, so Jeff wanted to talk to him in person before he made a final decision on it.
David, you make sure you do not forget that.
Yeah, I'm not gonna forget that.
But I will, I did talk to Jeff already.
Okay, the other comment I have is the gate on Matthews, has that been approved by the police and fire? Because that was.
Yes. Yep.
Okay.
And um.
Because that was a big issue when we first put up the fence.
Yeah, no, we have the fire companies approved it, the emergency management coordinator has approved it, uh and the chief has approved as well. We have every, we have um emails and everything in writing from everyone.
Thank you.
Any other further remarks? Hearing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.